Still looking at the longest minute. Called order, the meeting of the city of Columbia, the city council on the September twentieth twenty twenty two. Like to ask for the end to give the invocation and then we'll rise together and do the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Robert George Sanders. Dan, will you call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Tillyo?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the September sixth twenty twenty two city council minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they will be accepted as submitted. I want to note at this point in time that we have three public hearings scheduled for seven fifteen. So wherever we are in our business at seven fifteen, we will conduct those public hearings at that time and interrupt the process that we're into at that time. The next item we have is the reading of communications. And I would like to read this correspondence which we received. September twentieth twenty twenty two. Dear Mayor Noel, please thank all the city council members and the city manager Lance Willard for the kind words and the proclamation of September eleventh as Pat Tingle Day. The plaque is beautiful and will be will serve as a reminder of the most wonderful day. I am blessed to have been gifted with the resources to honor my son and husband, the Firestones and the new special little town of my birth, education and now later life. It's been a joy. Appreciatively, Pat Tangle. So I think this is a beautiful, beautiful note and I can say that when we presented the proclamation to her, she was very, very happy and very pleased and so I think that's very nice that Pat sent us that recognition. Next, we have our reports of commissions and board. And you have also received a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of September thirteenth twenty twenty two. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. The next item on the agenda is recognition of persons desiring to appeal, to appear. We have Nicole Ice representing the North Elm Street resident discussed closing of North Elm from Parkview Drive to East Park Avenue during the hours of trick or treat night in the city of Columbia once a day and timer set by city council.
So nice to see you guys again today.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So I don't know if everyone is. Nicole Ice. I don't know if anybody here is super familiar with how North Elm Street is during Halloween hours. Last year, we had some incredibly close calls with speeding cars going down North Elm. And when I when we originally, when we originally talked about this, it was like almost immediately after Halloween last year. We were talking about closing from East Park all the way down to Parkview with keeping Parkview open. But I feel like this is what I've showed to you today. It's from Prospect to West Salem Street, or East Salem Street. That way people can still access Port Street. We've already talked to the Nazarene Church about closing it all the way through East Salem, but I don't know if that's super necessary. They do have the Trump or treat, which makes me a little bit nervous having all of those kids going down that way. You can still access the Nazarene Church from Parkview. So we're just asking permission for the hours you guys decide to do Halloween and the date to be able to close down North Elm from Prospect to East Salem. That will at least curb some of the speeding drivers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Wait, wait, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Obviously, you're talking about closing off all the crossing streets between this range, right?
Correct. So the crossing street, the only crossing street that would be closed would be Herbstor, technically.
Okay.
That intersection of Herbstor and North Elm.
Yeah, there aren't any alleys that cross.
They're all driveways.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, there's no alleys.
Yeah. The original proposal would have had several alleys and I think at least one. Because there's an alleyway that goes through. I don't know if it goes, yeah, it does go through from the from the church down to the well, birdfish, basically.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's.
But you've already you've cut that off, so that's not in there.
There's no, there's no houses there, so I don't want to cut off more than we need to. I just wanted to be safe.
Yeah, and it's and the other thing Salem between Salem and Parkview, there's only two houses and one of those is just across the alleyway.
Right. Yeah. So this made a little bit more sense for us when we like looked it over again because we want everyone to be safe. And this seems like the most responsible thing to do and it will be the coolest nightmare on Elm Street Halloween you've ever seen. It's gonna be killer. I mean, not technically, but theoretically. Metaphorically. So I don't know when you guys are doing the vote for when Halloween is going to be.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Oh, it's tonight. Nailed it.
I just have one question and it's chief. Emergency vehicles egress, you know, if we had a problem, how would we handle it? Because I share your, you know, your idea too, and I think it's a good one, but I just don't. I just wanted to make sure that we're covering all the bases. Okay. So we'd be okay if there was an issue? Okay.
Any other questions?
No. No, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this request.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further questions?
I think there's other ways to handle this other than closing the street. I think we're opening up a can of worms if we go for Elm Street. What other neighborhood is going to want the same thing? We're going to shut the whole town down for Halloween. I think maybe we could maybe no parking on both sides of the street. We have no parking on one side, no parking on the other sides. So at least you can see the little kids darting out and most, most people take, you know, at least we always took one parent with the kids. One parent stayed home. That, you know, you control those things. I, I, I really don't think it's necessary. I live in the same neighborhood. I've seen it for several years. You know, that's where my kids headed headed for Halloween because that's where you got the most treats, so.
Well, I the only so there's no stationary, like I've not seen any like stationary, like permanently park keys off. Cars parked on the road, have you? Like the only ones that I see on the side of the road are the parents that like literally are driving next to their children. And then that's start, that's when like the parents driving next to their kids is kind of what starts like this triple down effect of people speaking. Because people get behind those cars doing that, they get irritated that they're going so slow and they jump out around them to get around them. You can't see in front of that. So like that's kind of what spurs like this speeding and like these small instances where like someone could get hurt. Now, I like, I understand what you're saying completely. Like I know that you live on that street and I, I understand the can of worms thing. I thought about it myself. I'm just trying to do what's safe, so.
I think it's worth trying for the one year and if it doesn't work out, then we go back to the way it was.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Dan, will you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
No.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tillyo?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we'll turn to our manager's report. Lance?
Thanks, Mayor. That survey that we've been talking about for the progress committee is online under news events and I encourage you to share that. We're getting a lot of responses, but we hope to get more. And then can't remember the date, but there is going to be a date. We're going to meet at the theater for a kind of a public meeting about it. Moxie Events, we've been talking about them all summer. The they worked with the theater to have several upcoming events and we, we shared those those events with you on your, your email. If you could share that, that would be great. First Friday, the chamber, the first Friday in October, there will be a a regular block party with a Dora and then Moxie Events is going to do the dinner on Main Street and those tickets are on sale now. We met with Omega to discuss upcoming grant opportunities and that the state will be giving out. Members of our county are teaming up and we're going to workshop next week to learn about more about the program. We think that there's they're asked, they're going to be asking for collaborative efforts in, in regionalization. So we're going to try to put something together countywide and we've been working on that. Other grant opportunities will be as part of the infrastructure coming up. Our cap is going to be help help us working through that process. The mayor spoke about September eleventh that went very well. It was great to have the Firestones and it was a great day to show Columbia off and they loved it. We went out to the Lightly Road test track and there's a museum out there. They actually walked the test tracks. And there were eight Firestones here with Bob Troyer, who's their representative. And then we did a tour and then we ended up back at the park. So it was a, it was a great day. We have fifteen seconds. Let's see, progress committee. We met with the entrepreneur class today and we're going to be trying to come up with some new projects for this year and we'll get back to you on that. And with that, I think it's seven fifteen.
Okay. Our timekeeper has seven fourteen.
Oh, let's see. We are in the process of upgrading our software at City Hall. We've been using it for over ten years now. That's going to be eighteen month process. You know, the conversion be pretty big, pretty big process and we're working on that now.
Thank you. And you'll have more when we.
I, yes.
So we'll come back. Everybody can remind me to Lance, as we finish public hearings.
Okay.
We actually have three public hearings and we're going to conduct right now. And the first public hearing is going to be regarding the rezone of twelve point two, three, two, two acres from R one and R two to R two P U D. And you have received a copy. That's the example or the exhibit thirty one thirty seven. Are there any comments anyone from the public wants to make regarding this matter? Okay, I'm hearing no commentary on that particular public hearing. So I will close the public hearing on the first item. And I will open up the discussion on public hearing number two, which is the rezone of seven point three, six, seven acres from I two to C four. Is there any, anyone here that would like to speak to that particular public, public hearing matter? Hearing none, we will close that public hearing indicating no comment. Public hearing, the third public hearing is the rezone of point seven nine, six acres from I two to C four. Are there any comments, questions regarding that matter? Again, hearing no comments, we will close that particular public hearing. So the three public hearings we've conducted and we've closed all of them and we will now move to our.
Manager's report.
Pardon? The manager.
Okay.
All right.
We're probably screwed out, but it's, is, where are we at in that process?
Sure, we're going to have first reading tonight and our second reading on October fourth. And it'll be done. Yes, yep, yep.
Very short. Good question. Good question.
I just as a, as a side of that, there may be council questions when we're doing that. So if you want to hang around that.
Okay, Lance?
Okay, we submitted two more stormwater projects pre-applications to FEMA this, this week. We also applied for a grant for a lead line survey to be done by the end of twenty twenty five. I believe we have to have our lead lines and any lead lines in the city identified and I believe actually removed and we're working towards that. It is an up, I mean, it's a monumental task, but we're going to have our cap help us do that. So we hope to get a, a grant to help do that and then we'll hopefully reapply for that every, every six months until we're done. Let's see, we're in the process of, let's see, let's see. Oh, we, we working with Ace Hardware again on the leaf bag flyers handout. They're going to be given out at Ace Hardware on October fifteenth during their regular business hours. And then on those hour, on that card will be the dates that will be collecting them. But after October fifteenth, any extras will be up here at City Hall in the cabinet outside the door here. I just want to note that the insurance committee met last month and the form fire is now open. Just in case we go have to go out to, you know, for advertising or, or searching or you know, for, for insurance policies. Let's see. On the bids, the bids on the sewer assessment project, they did come in too high, well over the ten percent. And therefore we're going to ask you to reject them tonight. We're going to try to value engineer reconsider some things and see if we can't get, get a lower price without losing too much of that project. If, if you remember, there's about six or seven property owners. City is one of them and you know, if we can, we can save, save those members money, that would be great. Plus, you know, still get them sewer and still look to the future for expansion at the same time. So that's, that's what we're going to be working on. We hope to rebid next week. Let's see, street department with landscape previous dig sites that occurred over the summer. We picked up fifteen loads of brush. We put ten towns, ten tons of material down for potholing and swept the streets after the street fair and the parade. We did help, we did help the water department on a couple taps. The water department did need some help on this one. They, we put a new tap in. We were at the top of East Park Avenue, putting a new line in over to the park and got that done right before September eleventh. So it worked out well. Waste water department, we did have to order a couple pumps, rather large pumps and those, those lead times are at six weeks, which aren't as bad as some of the other things that we've been running into, but we should be in good shape there. Park and Cemetery, been working with engineers still on the pool filtration. We've got the access hatch and everything ordered to access the, the basement of the pool where all the plumbing is and we'll be doing that this, probably this fall or winter. And we have a contractor already set up for that. I think it was at the last meeting, we talked about fix the sticks and we're trying to fix the old chapel and we're writing a, a grant right now to maybe, you know, hopefully we can secure more funding for that project. Electric department, we met with our AMP representatives for our annual power supply. They gave us great news that you know, what we do is we look at our, our portfolio and five, six years ago, when I was talking here, we were long, which would meant that we were over invested in as far as the size of us through, you know, for generation plants and we have we've gotten rid of some of our obligations on our energy portfolio. So we're now not short or long. And that's, that's good. That's really good news now that the, the energy market is has kind of gone crazy recently, not only gas, but the electric market. The electric market is, you know, a lot of times based on the fossil fuels. So if they go up, there's, you know, that's going to be an issue. But the good news for us, our, our portfolio is such that for the foreseeable future, our regular rates should stay about the same. Now we could be affected by transmission, transmission cost or demand cost, but as you remember, we try to do the energy savings days. We did that this year. We believe early indications, we have not got the, the total report on it. But the five or six days that we did it were the top five days and we believe it's going to save us roughly hundred seventy thousand dollars on next year's transmission cost. Because remember they're based on that highest day that you're on that grid. So again, we appreciate all the industries and all the residents working together to get that and keep those costs down. So I think, I think the good news for, for our city is you know, we may have you know, concerns about gasoline or even natural gas until next year, but our electric rates are looking good. That brings me to the gas supplier. We've talked about our gas aggregation program for, for a while now. We did go out the market since the last meeting and we did secure a it's a, it's a variable rate for the first few months until this into the spring. And then we're going to convert automatically to a fixed rate, which is about, I think it's point zero or point eight, zero, nine. Think about it, you know, five years ago, we're sitting there talking and we're talking about three, nine, four, three. You know, the, so it had, it has went up, but the, the aggregators and the other communities that are in this aggregation program looked at it, looked at the various things and we think that this is the best bet for, for coming up. So it is online, all about the new, new supplier, which will be IGS. And this is an opt out program. So if you don't have somebody right now, if you're not in, in another program, you're going to be put into this and the variable rate will be a point one, five lower than the current SEO rate that you're on right now. So it's, that's, that's how it's going to be determined. So we, we believe that, you know, that's, that's the way to go for now. So right now on your gas supplier rate, it's an SEO, which is, that's, that's their standard rate. And it's a variable rate. The variable rate that we're going to use over, I believe it's December, January, February and March will be point one, five lower than that, what you're getting with S, if, if you were to stay with SEO of Columbia gas. So it's going to be better than that. And then we're going to lock in a fixed rate point eight, zero, nine, I believe it is in the spring for the believe it would be through twenty twenty four.
We won't, we won't be on this new rate until December.
Yes. And that's it. That's all I know. Any questions?
So in plain words.
Plain words.
Why don't we say what, how it's going to affect our residents?
Well, I mean, I mean, the plain words is we're in a different environment right now, right? Where it's scary time with the, the, the gas rates going up, I mean, on the market, they there were days on the market that they tripled from what we were paying before. We have picked you know, conservative path to grab a variable rate for which we think is going to be the way to go over the winter. And then we're going to have a fixed rate, just like we always have. But the variable is, is a different thing that we've experienced before than we've experienced before. We would have liked to get a, got a fixed rate, but we just could not get that rate down far enough. So.
The average household.
Yeah, it's, I mean, our, our average household gas rates are up from several years ago considerably. But we're, we're all in the same boat as far as this area. You know, my daughter lives Lyons area, basically. And you know, she's in a gas aggregation program and they put her in something very similar to what we're, we're, we're at. But we're, we are in this together with a lot of other AMP communities too. We, we, you know, form this gas aggregation program that has paid off in the past and I, I believe it'll at least stabilize us through the through this unsure time, especially with that fixed rate. But if you recall, the reason we're sitting here is because we had such a good rate that the, the previous company went out of business. So they had promised, you know, that they could supply gas at a certain rate and they couldn't, they can't do, they couldn't do it, couldn't do that continuously. So.
And basically, this is a nationwide issue because of the increase in these costs.
Sure.
And, and how, you know, so this is, it's going to impact everyone.
Yeah, yeah, but.
It's actually, it's a combination of two things. One is the increase in cost, the increase in cost has occurred largely because of the, a lot of federal lands have been taken off the market for drilling. And there's a big movement with the federal government to try to reduce the amount of natural gas being used in the country. It's a greenhouse, yes.
It's very good.
No, I spent a lot of years working in the gas industry.
Well, here's our resident expert.
Yeah.
And it is something we're going to have to watch and it's going to be a costly item for, for us, for our residents and something we have to be concerned about. So, but we appreciate the report. So, but we appreciate the report, does anybody else have any questions for Lance? Okay, you've also received a copy of the uh bill list of nine twenty twenty two. Are there any questions or comments on the bill list? Okay, hearing none, that'll be accepted, uh I am looking for a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So move second.
Do you want me to call the roll?
Souter?
Yes. Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna start with whole business. Uh resolution number twenty two dash R dash six zero seven, second reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the budget commission. And authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So move second.
Questions? Do you want me to call the roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes. Yes.
Resolution number twenty two dash R dash six zero eight, second reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates is determined. By the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So move second.
Motion second. Any questions? Do you want me to call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Ordinance number twenty two dash O dash three one three six, second reading. An ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with Republic Services. Thirty eight seventy Hendrix Road, Youngstown, Ohio. Four four five one five for the hauling and disposal of wastewater sludge from the wastewater treatment plant.
So move.
Second.
This sounds like really important to pass this. Do you want me to call the roll?
Tatilia?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Move to new business. First item of new business, motion to set trick or treat night in the city of Columbiana for Monday, October thirty first. Twenty twenty two, from five to seven PM.
So move second.
Damn, call the roll please.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes. Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
So surprised that we were going with that date, Tom.
You, he wants it.
Just think about it a little.
He wants it in April. Ordinance number twenty two dash O dash three one three seven, first reading. An ordinance amending the Columbiana City zoning ordinance. Thereby rezoning twelve point two three two two acres. From R one residential low density and R two residential medium density zoning districts. To R two P U D, that's a planned unit development.
So moved, second.
Questions, comments? At what point? If we wanna talk about this being uh. Least or rental properties? That this is not.
This one's not.
Which one?
I guess I don't, I don't understand.
And so.
I don't think we really know for sure what it's gonna be.
Maybe if there is any information.
We're here to, we're here to rezone it. Uh the, the land development is gonna be a separate project, right? Okay.
Which would come before planning commission.
Right, yep, right.
And, you know, with something that may come here, but this is, yeah, Lance is right, this is just a reason.
Very good, Charlie.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty two dash O dash three one three eight, first reading. An ordinance amending the ci- Columbiana City zoning ordinance. Thereby rezoning seven point three six seven acres. From I two light industrial district to C four intensive and automobile oriented commercial district.
So move. Second.
Just for clarification. My understanding is that the automobile oriented commercial district only means that it's a district where. People, a lot of automobiles are gonna be traveling to it to uh. To use it, it doesn't require that it be automobile oriented businesses.
Good point. That is correct. It doesn't necessarily mean automobile dealerships. Basically, more intensive commercial usage is the whole idea of a C four district.
And it's a long route fourteen.
It is a long route fourteen. Um the back of this property, I believe that Mr. Brothers can explain, but if I understand, that the back will remain. I two, so basically the frontage on fourteen will become C four under this ordinance.
Right, we have a. Another business that wants to be out there. And would not have been appropriate for I two.
No.
But yet, when we look at it, the existing businesses along the frontage are appropriate for C four.
Yep.
So by changing just the frontage along Route fourteen allows the businesses that are there currently. While bringing in a new business on the frontage. And this is all directly across from the industrial park.
Correct.
So it's basically, if you know where the. Uh Houston, the Gavita Port, where I just called the bus garage is now. From that creek to the east of that. To the um. There's an older uh building there, the dominant shop, you know, at one point. It's that frontage back about three hundred and fifty feet from Route fourteen. Everything behind it, which I still on would remain I two.
Thank you for that, any other comments? Again, called question.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty two dash O dash three one three nine, first reading. An ordinance amending the Columbiana City zoning and ordinance. Thereby rezoning point seven nine six acres. From I two light industrial district to C four intensive and automobile oriented. Commercial district.
So I'm over. Second.
The questions or comments?
Uh just the, this is a nice one, nice to get that strip away, cleaned up and actually used. Um because it's, it's just been sitting there for how long now, so. It'll make me waiting for this for a while, so.
And what's the intended use?
It's gonna be, it's gonna start at the farmer's market. I put my proposal, probably expand after having some electricity at the target stations in there at some point later on. Instead of a millionaires, we kind of build it as I go, but it's gonna be. And outlet, there'll be some assignment stuff there for other small farmers and gardeners, honey syrup. Uh vegetables and season, uh probably some hydroponic stuff in there in the winter time, people that do the indoor gardening. Also, it's a small building, can't get it all in there.
Very good, thank you, any other comments? Damn, you call roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes. Yes.
Ordinance number twenty two dash O dash three one four zero, first reading. An ordinance amending section two of ordinance number twenty one dash O dash thirty one. Zero one, establishing a wage schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees for the city of Columbiana.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, any comments? Questions? Jan, call the roll.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty two dash R dash six zero nine, first reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Software Solutions Inc. To provide a computer software system and services.
So move. Second.
Any questions or comments?
We, we could just get Microsoft Office or something else.
Jan, call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Like to seek a motion to consider the next item on the agenda as an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Jan, call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty two dash R dash six one zero, emergency. An emergency resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids submitted. On or before September sixteenth, twenty twenty two. For the County Line Road, State Route fourteen sewer extension project. In response to the advertisement for such bids, following the passage. Of Columbiana City Ordinance number twenty two dash O dash three one three two. And authorizing the city manager to advertise again for such bids.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, any uh questions or comments in the motion? Do you want me to call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Tatilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Will there any, be any business conducted after the executive session? And uh, so the answer is no, we will not conduct any business after the executive session. So I am seeking a motion to uh. Approve an executive session for the discussion of pending litigation. What? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh. The president of council. Advised me. That uh we should, at this point. Um I have an opportunity for any comments at this time. Uh prior to us going into executive session, so I'd start by saying. Are there anybody, is there anyone out there? That would like to speak or make any comment to uh for the record here for cup, public comment? Any words of wisdom?
I didn't uh understand the C one and R one and all that. Um I live down by Park Avenue, by uh Tex Restaurant. I know the golf course is there and I didn't understand any of what you were saying about. R one and C one and all that, I don't know what that means.
R, R is residential, C is commercial and I is industrial.
And as your number clarification is uh, one is like single family dwellings. Two progresses on up, three a settle.
And P U D stands for planned unit development. Which allows a little bit of differentiation than just a straight. Let's say R two zoning district, so possibly the setbacks are a little different from the street, things like that. And what that zoning on East Park is going from R two to R two P U D.
Okay, now does that mean that could go, you could build condos over there?
Whatever is allowed in an R two P U D. And it would allow multiple multifamily house, so I E condos. But only up to a certain um. You know, triplex or duplex, nothing bigger than that as far as a building.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. And could I, thank you very much sir for doing that, I think that's great. This is our zoning map up here, and so when we leave to go executive session, if you wanna feel like coming up here. Getting a feeling for looking at how the city is divided into the various districts, you're welcome to do that. Uh we all have to look at a book like this thick, so we're giving you the abridged version. Of uh, you know, what is in the information, but I think it's an excellent question, most people are not familiar. With, you know, what we're doing and what we can do with our land here in Columbiana. But uh people way before us, uh we ever got here kind of laid out these. Regulations and rules and so we still abide by them and we feel it's very important and um. You know, we have a planning commission and uh Mr. Soutter is head of our planning commission and. We have to meet and make sure that whatever somebody wants to do in the community, that they come in front of us and. You know, we look at the book very closely and decide what we can do.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so you, you explain briefly. Where we're at in process, what's left to be done and where we might have to be. To make sure we're in the right place.
We actually have, I guess I can take that. As far as the process of rezoning, this is the first reading, the second reading will be at the first meeting in October. Um if it passes, then that means that the map will change color where. Your property is to an R two P U D. You're still, I think, before planning commission as far as the overall project. So, this part was basically to rezone the property. So that the use that you're intending fits.
It's part of getting the rezoning, it's always two here, public hearing, that that two part review, is that how?
There's always, i- whenever there's a rezoning, are you talking about? There's always, whenever there's a rezoning, are you talking about amending the zoning map? Yes, we are, and that's what requires public hearing and notice to adjoining property owners, et cetera. Um, unless council passes something as an emergency. Everything that comes before council legislation, ordinance or resolution. Is going to have two readings. So typically zoning is not something that. This council probably wants to pass as an emergency. So it's going to be something that requires two meetings, meaning two readings. As far as the public hearing, that's a requirement for a zoning amendment. Again, changing the map, so what we try to do is have that public hearing. Um, timed so that possibly that could be the first reading of the legislation. To actually enact the zoning amendment, and then the second reading would be. You know, the next meeting. Technically, from the public hearing, the council has thirty days. To act on the amendment that's been requested. Because the way this started was it started with an application that went to planning commission, planning commission then sends it to council. That's where a public hearing is held, and then council has to accept planning commission's recommendation. Makes sense?
Yes, yeah, so October fourth is the second.
Second reading on this ordinance.
If that does go through, then that's when officially it's.
Yep.
Correct.
Correct.
The zoning, like I said, then we can change the color of the map for the properties.
And I can, I can video conference it on that date, is that possible?
Yeah, you can zoom.
Sure.
Yeah, you have to. It's uh, it's laid out in the, on the website.
Yes, you may.
Thanks, Rob. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm gonna look at the president of council. Uh, I would, I would like to ask for.
Um, there are other people might wanna have.
Oh.
Can tell you something?
I'm sorry.
Okay, guys, we are professionals. Don't try this at home. Motion to close uh Elm Street uh on that uh. The second, not the, not the original.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, I just didn't.
And and I apologize because I did not, Dan, I did also did not. Give the council members an opportunity to speak.
Uh, no worry about that. I just knew that I, I couldn't hear and I'm stumbling here. I knew what I wanted to do as far as the vote. Okay, the second item is relatively simple. I wanna thank whoever was the chief or Jesse or Lance or whoever put that great big dump truck. Up at the uh, you know, the blocker up at the uh, street fair. I I think that made a lot of people feel a whole lot more comfortable. Um, the only thing is that instead of being so far over here where Mr. Brothers' property is located. We'd have been nice, we'd come over just a tad further so that, as they'd wipe that uh, Ferris wheel out and the bingo tent would have been gone. But anyhow, whoever signed a fraud center. But anyhow, I I I just think things like that loosen it up a little bit, need to be said that they're always looking out for, for our citizens here in town. And I'm done.
Thank you.
Wanna go to executive session, let's have a vote.
I just wanted to say that the uh, assisted living home that's going in on County Line Road, they've finally started. Uh, they're ripping out trees by the bushels and uh, moving dirt and we're on our way. Very good.
So is uh, is that dependent on our shore project? Be well ahead. Okay. Yeah.
Just any other comments up here from the council? Want, wanna make a comment? Okay. I would like to have a motion to uh. Have us go into executive session for the discussion of pending litigation, section one twenty one, point twenty two, G three.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Um. Uh, D M, you call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Fattilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
I think everyone just wanted to say no.
Thank you. Go for this at home, we are. You're gonna be one of the, you're gonna be one of those things where even the Russians are afraid of. Could I entertain a motion to come out of executive session?
So move second.
You please call the roll.
McBean?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Fattilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes. Yes.
Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Come in.
So move.